At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for August 8th, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Clerk Piper, please let the roll call show that Councilmember Mosher is absent this evening. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll make the motion to excuse Councilmember Mosher.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Approval of the minutes, July 25th, 2022. Councilmember Kibble?
I'll make a motion that we approve of the minutes.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the bills this evening? Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll move the bills.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda? Councilmember Dill?
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Tonight's consent agenda, resolution for establishing granting poverty exemption. Councilmember Kurzweil.
Move the consent agendas presented by the mayor.
I'll second. Deputy Clerk Piper, you can go with whoever you had on that horse race.
I don't care.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. And please remember, we have a two-minute time limit and also a second public comment at the end of the meeting.
Hi, good evening. Julie Paquette, 568-889-MILE, Lyon Township. I am a volunteer with the South Lyon Area Historical Society. I just wanted to come in tonight to bring attention to our Depot Day that's coming up September 10th, from 10 to 5 in the, uh, 10 to 4, sorry, in the Historic Village. There's gonna be a lot of fun games, activities, there's gonna be food. And this year, we are also going to be having a silent auction to benefit the Historic Barn Preservation Project. The, um, Historical Society is working on adding a barn to the village. The Roper family of South Lyon Salem has a barn they would like to see moved over to the village. They're interested in donating that. We are in the early stages of the planning and fundraising for that, but we've got forward movement going on that. Ideally, we'd like to get the funds raised quickly enough that we can get this project moving for next year. Hopefully, having the barn being moved next summer as part of the South Lyons 150-year anniversary. To that end, the, um, society has had a logo designed to help celebrate and promote our upcoming birthday. I don't know if the camera can capture that. I don't know where the camera is. So we're pretty pleased with that. If you are interested, or if anyone is interested in helping out with the barn preservation project, please consider volunteering. We really need help. We need help now. We can match you with something that matches your interest level, um, the time that you have available. And, uh, we're also going to be seeking corporate sponsors and other support from the community. So Depot Day, come on out, have fun, bring the family. And please consider joining our barn planning meetings. We meet monthly. We're now offering a Zoom link for anybody who's not able to show up. We just really need participation and help. And, um, check out our society's Facebook page for more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I need your name again.
Julie Paquette.
Do you spell that for me?
Sure. P-A-Q-U-E-T-T-E.
And I have 568-888, and what's your street?
Nine Mile.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk Piper, for the clarification. All right, at this time, we will close the floor for public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Um, I'll keep my report for you brief this evening. We've got a couple other things coming up tonight, so. Uh, first, wanted to touch on the farmer's market, both for the Motor Fest weekend as well as what's coming up for this weekend. So over Motor Fest, uh, we had the most ever vendors we have ever had at the South Lyon Market. Uh, we were originally scheduled for 64. We ended up with 61 and four food trucks. So it was, I mean, incredible, really, to see that number of vendors down at the, at the farmer's market. Our Promotions Committee has continued to meet, and we've started to develop a fundraising plan for the Holiday Spectacular. Uh, we also had a meeting last week, um, for the Ladies Night in November event. Um, I've contacted, uh, the theater. I noticed that the marquee had changed. Um, I called them this morning. I haven't heard back from them yet, but hopefully I will this week, and I'll be able to provide more of an update there. Uh, we had also looked into utilizing the theater space for the Holiday Spectacular. But they said that they maybe, or that they weren't interested in us having to do that. So I'm trying to find out more information. Uh, as I'm able to get more, I'll be sure to pass it along to council. Let's see here. Uh, last week, I attended a training regarding building codes on Main Street that was provided through our membership with the National Main Street Program. It was a three-day, uh, online conference that looked at fire suppression, um, universal design, and how, um, historic buildings can meet ADA requirements and, um, looking at different aspects of that. So, uh, it was a very informative conference. I had to say that I don't know too much about building code because I haven't really studied it. Uh, so it was good to learn about that. With that, I'll be open to any questions if anybody has any.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Actually, it's more of a comment. I think that it's, it's really critical that you were at that, that last seminar. I mean, we could lose the downtown very easily if, uh, things didn't go the way that we need it to as far as like a fire or something like that.
Right, yeah.
When you see the holidays in places like that. So, I mean, it'd be really cool if there were some way to try to push the idea of implementing as much as possible with some of the people that are in those, those circumstances. And I don't know how, how much there's help out there financially for any of that, but it'd be really good to at least get the message out and, you know, so that they could make good judgments on whether or not they want to, um, try to fund it themselves. So, but that, I'm, I'm really happy you saw that. That's good.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hanson?
I was just overjoyed to see the social media post about the, the theater coming back and the fact that the renovations are progressing and then also, uh, investment in the theater space to, to get it reopened. So that was, that was just so great to see. Definitely a surprise, uh, but I'll definitely look forward to hearing, uh, about, you know, any updates once they, they do reach out. Obviously, they're probably pretty busy.
Yeah, probably.
Has there been any movement as far as, you know, like the bookstore or even the old hair salon downtown as far as any interest?
So I was told that the closing for the old bookstore is gonna be completed next Friday, most likely. So once that's done, then I'll know more. Um, I spoke with the Realtor today, and they said that they weren't at, really at liberty to disclose that information to me. So, um, the hair salon on the corner, that property, um, I found out is listed currently for $750,000. So, um, we'll see how that goes. Um, and again, you know, we're always looking to see how we can help there, too, so.
Any movement on the appliance store, the, um, the other place that had a, like a stop order on it, or?
Uh, no, nothing yet. Um, I have to get the contact information for the contractor and try and reach out to them to see what's going on there. Because it's been, you know, it's been at least a month since that stop work order has been placed, um, on the door. So, you know, be giving them a call as well.
And finally, uh, the clock?
Yes.
Do we have all four?
Yes, they are all four, pretty close to the same time. Yeah. Like a minute or two off.
Figured I'd get that on the record. I, I thought it was all correct, but.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
The, the hair salon place that was at the end of the block there, has DDA established any kind of a advisory board of things that they, you guys would like to target for neighboring businesses? You know, where you might end up trying to solicit that kind of activity?
So, yeah, we've, uh, discussed that in the Economic Vitality Committee. One of our recent meetings, we discussed, um, kind of the ideal business mix for downtown. Uh, and some of the RRC stuff as well, kind of helps push you in that direction to, to come up with an economic development strategy that will best suit, you know, our local needs, so.
Yeah, I think that's actually really in our best interest to end up pursuing something like that. I mean, the other businesses already have a taste of what's going on and what might end up being a good complement to what's going, or what's already going, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just so you know, I had done a Facebook post about the theater. The guy that fixed the clock is also the guy that was putting up that marquee. And, um, it's the guys from Brownie Sign. So he reached out and he complimented, or was complimentary about seeing a post about his work. So I thought that was cool. Uh, it is terrific, though, to see that coming back online.
All right. Thanks for that update, Nate. We'll see you shortly.
All right.
We'll move on to the Fire Chief Report this evening, and Chief Thorington?
Good evening.
Hey, chief.
Hi. We are in our 654th call as we speak right now. Our ladder truck is still on schedule for the fall. I believe we sent you some pictures. Uh, they're installed in the box right now on the ladder on it, so it's, it is progressing. It's moving in the right direction. It's all silver. It's not painted yet, and it's not completed, but it's moving in the right direction. Uh, we are gonna have a spray park on August 16th between 1:00 and 2:00 p.m. It doesn't seem like it was a big hit, so we're gonna do one more of those. As far as training, we're at the light, we have the burn center going again. We did a search and rescue. Uh, we also did a hose operations and a pump engineering. We're certified, uh, two more firefighters as fire engineers, which they can now drive the fire engines as well as the rescues. And then, uh, Fire Inspector has done multiple fire inspections, plant reviews, and has done a couple walkthroughs of new construction and remodels. So that's kind of all I have for you tonight.
Councilmember Hanson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you think the new truck is gonna be available for Pumpkin Fest for unveiling, or do you think that'd be too soon?
You know, they're saying end of September for delivery, but then we have to get the, um, the radios installed and the equipment. So I'm guessing end of October, November-ish? So it'd be, just depends on how things roll and supplies and whatnot.
Cool. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Has, um, Mr. Moynihan, has, has he got a schedule of trying to, how he's going to go about getting all the fire hydrants inspected for come fall?
For the private or for the public?
For the private stuff.
The private stuff is done by, uh, private companies, and then they are.
Don't we validate that, though?
We validate through there, yes.
Yes, okay. Yeah. Okay. I mean, is he, is there a, a mechanism where, like, he'll get notice that they're going to be doing the, the review, you know, whoever the private person is contracting, and then we'll end up going after they're done and validating what's happened?
Well, right now, they're, they're supposed to be done by end of October, which is part of the new ordinance that's in front of council now. And then, once they do that, they'll submit those to us, and then we will.
Okay, just give you the, the total, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So, a while back, um, Brad, the Fire Inspector, brought up the concern he had about a disconnect when a business moves out of an existing location, new business moves in. He's not really looped in to perform an up, a baseline inspection at that point. There was some discussion about how we put a process in place to avoid that being, you know, falling through the cracks, so to speak. So do you know if anything's been done to address that, uh, situation at all?
I do know he's had a few meetings to look into that further. I don't know what his results are.
Okay.
Right now, but I can find out for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right. Great update, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Police Chief Report, and filling in for Chief Sovick tonight is Lieutenant Baki.
Just got a few things for you tonight. Number one, we are planning on hiring our cadet tomorrow. It'll be your first day. So she'll be starting with us. Um, just gotta get through all the paperwork and things like that. So we're excited to get another cadet on board with us. Um, we, unfortunately, we had one of our crossing guards quit, so we're looking for two crossing guards now. She was looking for, uh, some more work, a different job, so. Uh, and then our, our new flooring's being installed as we speak. So we've got two of our, we've got our computer room installed and our interview room. They are now doing our, uh, front clerical area, as well as the sergeants and the lieutenant's. Office is gonna be completed, hopefully tomorrow. So we're kind of in a disarray. We got a lot of tools and things around there, so. And then finally, uh, the chief wanted me to touch base on, there was some discussion about, um, the intersection by East Lake and Mill Street and the signage there. And, uh, he called TIA, and they got back with them. Chuck Keller, uh, spoke with them about it, about the signage, as well as the lights and wire there by the train, why there's two sets of lights there. And basically, what, what they're telling us is that, number one, why there's two sets of traffic lights there is because of the train. And MDOT pretty much runs that area there, so they want to make sure that people can see that the lights are red in case the trains do, like, block in the other side of the lights. The also discussion was about the signage reference, the blocking of the driveway. They, he did indicate that they're gonna change that sign to state that stop here on red instead of don't block driveway. So that's gonna probably clear up a little bit of confusion there for motorists going through that intersection westbound. Uh, lastly, it was about signage stating not to block the intersection over, uh, Mill Street. And the reason why they don't want to do that is because if they leave it open, people have a tendency to wave people onto Lake Street, which may cause an accident. So their research says they already have the right of way. Let them proceed normal, and then let traffic flow normally. So that's the reason why there's not a good idea to put signage there just, uh, just east of that roadway, so. And that's all I got for, for that.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Doug, can you share the name of the, the cadet, or?
Uh, Caroline, uh, Caroline Callender is her name.
Okay.
Yep. She's actually from, uh, ooh, she just graduated from, is it Grand Valley? If I got that right. Um, and she's looking into getting into law enforcement. She wants to, you know, kind of see how it's gonna work out, so we're excited to have her.
Great. Thank you.
That's great. Anyone else have anything for Lieutenant Baki tonight? All right. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will welcome Nate Mack in the presentation for Oakland County Main Street Program.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening again, council. So I just wanted to briefly introduce Annika Norris. She is our Main Street Oakland County liaison for South Lyon. So when you see in one of my reports, I spoke with Main Street Oakland County, it's probably 95% of the time I'm speaking with Annika. Um, she's been great to work with, very helpful for me, uh, coming into the community and helping to, you know, advance the Main Street Program. But, yeah, she wanted to briefly present, um, some things about, uh, Main Street Oakland County and the Main Street Program tonight. So here she is.
Thanks, Nate. Thank you to the council members and mayor for allowing me to come in. I did bring up the plaque, um, for South Lyon participating in the Main Street Program. Just want to clear something up. It does, it says affiliate program. This is the National Main Street Program, and there are two levels within National Main Street. That is the select level accredited, and then there is affiliate program. And, um, just, what, a year ago, you, in February, we've moved you up to, um, our, we have three levels, so we have, uh, select, partner, and then allied. You're in the allied, and you've now moved up to partner. But we're all the same program, but National recognizes two, two different tiers, so if anybody looks closely, that's why. Thank you for participating and doing, Nate and the board are doing great things, um, to bring the program up and continuing, continuing to elevate the program. Um, I don't want to take up too much of your time today. I did just want to go over a couple things. I sent Nate a couple things to pass along to you. It's a short little document from National Main Street called "A Proven Economic Development Strategy." And then I also had him send over, um, the investment, um, and impact statements for Oakland County Main Street Program and the, um, National Main Street Program. Ours are cumulative when you look at it, which we were super excited. This was the first year that, well, it's not the first. We reached over a million-dollar investment impact for, um, Oakland County Main Street Program. And when you look at these stats, it's, it's not exactly 100% accurate because we have 28 programs in Oakland County. But this is just keeping record of the 13 select-level communities. So if we added all 28 programs, this number would be much higher. So it looks at job growth, public and private investment, and different things like that. So it's a kind of a nice thing to look over. It helps you understand, um, the importance of the Main Street Program and how important downtowns are to economic development. A lot of people think it's just like the big businesses that provide that economic development in our counties and all those big jobs. But downtowns provide several jobs, um, a great deal of jobs, so it's an important number to look at. And then, just kind of real quick, um, so the national, we are a part of the National Main Street. Oakland County is one of the only county-run programs in the United States. Most of them are state-run programs or, like, large city programs, like Orlando, Baltimore, Chicago. We're very fortunate. The Main Street Program has been around for, I believe it's 42 years now. And Oakland County Program is, the coordinating program has been around for 22 years. There is also a state program, but there wasn't always a state program. Oakland County kind of started with theirs, the state program had it, and then went away. But Oakland County really felt that it was important to continue investing those monies in the program. And with 28 communities, um, it, it shows that it's a good program. It, it's a very good economic development tool. And it, it works well. So just so you know, some of the things that, that we bring, we bring support and services. We don't want to dictate what to do in the program. It's a very, we're very flexible with the program, and each downtown is different and unique, so we need to come in and meet every community where they're at, right? And when Nate and I met, one of the things that we kind of talked about is you've got such a great downtown. You've got the organizational stuff going. There's a few things that we can work on, but we can really elevate you quickly so you get the opportunity for more grants and more funding. Being a part of National Main Street, um, at the affiliate level, allows businesses to apply for grants and allow, allows the town, um, itself to apply for grants. So it, it is very, um, it's very useful and important. And then we provide different grants. And you've been able to take, uh, part in the Flagstar Grant to help bring a little money in for the mural. We helped, we paid for Nate to go to the National Main Street Conference this year. I'm just trying to think of some of the other things. We provide a, we provide a lot of education. That is our big role, to be support, um, for the staff and education. I had, uh, 14 years of, um, planning experience as a consultant before I came to the national, or to Oakland County's program. And we have other people who have been managers before, uh, people with historic preservation backgrounds. We have an architect on staff who can help with facades and different things like that. But again, I, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I just wanted to let you know that we are a resource for you to use and that we are very happy to be working with Nate and see all the great things that he and the board and the volunteers are doing. I guess, listening to some of the stuff that was talked about a little bit earlier, I think it's kind of cool to know that we did an assessment of the program last year where we brought in professionals. We had a professional planner, uh, and a couple managers, and then, um, someone with a lot of Main Street experience come in and sit down. And we looked at the overall program, and one of the things that we talked about that should be a goal was becoming RRC-ready, certified, because that just means you're, with, with all the tools that they give you, it helps you be really ready for businesses that come in. So if a business wants to know what your zoning is, what, if they want to know, you know, who to contact, it, it just kind of bundles it all into a really great, um, program. And it, it, it's very welcoming, um, that you're certified when a business comes in because it just makes it easier for them to set up in your town. And then we are working, um, with Nate, um, another colleague at Main Street and I are working, and we're going to be doing a marketing study for the downtown, so to help really understand who's coming down, what businesses maybe are you missing, maybe what some, uh, a few things where businesses might want to offer additional items or such, just to kind of help out with that. So, um, i- if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. If you don't want to ask tonight, if you send them through Nate, I'll answer them as well.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. I know we're in the far corner of Oakland County, but it speaks a lot of the organization when you take the time to, to come and actually meet with us face-to-face, so thank you. Thank you so much. Um, I had a question on the resolution, and I just wanted a little bit of an explanation. It's the, it's the third allegation, not allegation, the third paragraph. And it says that the city administration is hereby authorized to proceed toward, um, implantation of the recommendations necessary to receive RRC certification. What, what exactly are the recommendations? And when you talk about implantation, what, what, what does that mean?
So, are you, that's their RRC resolution, correct?
Yes.
Is that what you're, okay.
Yes.
Yep. So that, um, is for the, the next bus, uh, next item of business? This was for, uh, the, the Main Street Oakland County presentation. But Annika mentioned they had pushed us to do that. The implementation, the recommendations that will come to us from the RRC program will be based off of the baseline report that is created by the MEDC staff. So, yep, separate, separate entities. So Annika is Main Street Oakland County. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation will be the group that, uh, we engage with the redevelopment-ready communities program.
So you don't have any tie-in at all for redevelopment?
No, I'm cer, I'm cert, I'm certified in redevelopment-ready, if you're a practitioner, but not in the, no, that's through the, uh, state of Michigan. That's through their funding. Main Street Oakland County is funded through Oakland County's, um, budget. So totally separate program.
But what is a certified redevelopment person? What, what role do they play that you don't?
Oh, well, they have, their, their job is specifically, uh, they're a state employee, and they work with a district, um, they probably have, like, three counties. I can't remember who yours is, but they, they go out and specifically work on, on economic, um, kind of all things economic development. Like, I'm working in, in another community with the redevelopment-ready person. They, they used to be called CAT Team. They changed that anyway. I'm trying to bring a housing development into a community. So, so they, they bring a lot, and it's just totally separate programs and funding through the state versus funding through the county.
So they're more broad-based in terms of economic activity. You are more concentrated in the downtown?
Correct. Yes. We, we, our work is specifically in, uh, downtowns or corridors or that, that kind of sense of place that you would consider.
There was a distinction, I wanted to know. And they weren't here, so you were. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Uh, thank you, thank you for allowing me to come, and thank you for being so supportive of the DDA and the Main Street Program. Without that support, it, it, and we run into many communities that aren't so supportive. So your support makes the world of difference for how your downtown runs and operates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we have no unfinished business this evening. We'll move on to new business. Number one, approval of redevelopment-ready community resolution.
Hello again. Uh, so the resolution before you tonight is, um, a resolution to, formerly- So the resolution before you tonight is a resolution to formally engage with the redevelopment-ready communities program. And what that means is it shows to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the MEDC, that the City of South Lyon is interested in engaging in the RRC program. So what that means, how the process will work, so once, or if the resolution is passed tonight, I will send the resolution to our contact at the MEDC. They will come back with a memorandum of understanding, we'll sign that, and then they'll get to work creating a baseline report, which, that report is generated off of the six best practices that are part of the RRC program. They'll look at everything from our zoning ordinance to the website to a number of different items to kind of show where we have our strengths and where we need to make these improvements. Once that report comes back to us, it will be presented to the city council so that you'll have time to look it over, you'll be presented with the information, and then the council can then determine if you'd like to continue with the program or not. If you elect to continue with the program, you can then decide if you would like to do the RRC essentials or the RRC certified route. The essentials route is less rigorous. The certified route is more rigorous, however, that gives us access to more funding. Additionally, the certified route allows us to have access to the redevelopment services team, which I didn't include it in this packet, but once the baseline report comes out, I'll, I'll kind of show you what that is. But they basically help you create requests for proposals for developers by providing you with, you know, different information that can be packaged up in a nice neat bundle, and you can send it out to people. They provide you with developer mixers, so I could go to, it's kind of like a networking event for communities and developers and say, hey, this is what we have going on in South Lyon, you think you'd be a great fit based off of this information. So yeah, that's kind of a, a basic explanation of the RRC program, how it works. And again, what is before you tonight is to approve the resolution to have basically the baseline report created.
Councilmember Diggle, and then I'll come to you, Councilmember Hanson.
I'm sorry if I missed it. I probably did. Is there a cost to this?
No.
Okay, so who's, how are they funding this whole thing? Allow it?
Um, the MEDC, I, I think they have allocated funds through the state budgeting process.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hanson, go ahead.
Since Lisa already actually asked the question that I was going to ask, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the City of South Lyon to participate in the redevelopment-ready communities program.
One second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hanson, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. We do have further discussion. Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
My, my understa, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding of redevelopment is when you have blocks of land that are not performing economically. Either they're not being developed, it's land that's wasted, vacant land, you have a block of buildings that are torn, buildings that are burned out, and you are trying to redevelop those areas. Or you have a business that may not necessarily be performing as good as it can, maybe as a retail, and maybe there's a different economic designation for that particular spot. We have a very small downtown. So where, where do you see redevelopment issues?
So, in the, so this will look at the entire city, but specifically in the downtown, there are, well, there are the two parking lots that we utilize for the farmer's market right now that could potentially be redevelopment sites. They're just parking lots, they're not producing any, you know, property tax revenue. I mean, there's other, you know, businesses come and go in the life cycle of a downtown, and if we're looking for, to improve the, the business mix in the downtown with something that we don't have currently, or there's something that we've identified that we would like to have, it could help us with that as well. But this RRC program also can help with industrial properties and that type of thing, too. So it's more of a, it can be a comprehensive citywide economic development approach, but it also includes the downtown in there as well.
Well, the city is built out. You have one piece of commercial property over on Dixborough that, that we haven't been able to sell, I don't know, Chuck hasn't been able to sell, I don't know, 20 years, 22, 25 years. There, there's your last piece of industrial property. The rest of it's subdivisions. So what's left? Zoning. So are they going to come in and attempt to rezone some of these subdivisions to put in the kind of housing that they want to put in?
No.
That they feel we should be putting in as a community?
They won't do that, no.
Well, wait a minute.
It, it, it's not going to happen, because the, the program is driven by the community. They, they provide recommendations best, based off of best practices to show, this is based off of information and data that they have, that this is what works best in communities. They're not saying that we have to do it, and if we don't like, if the council doesn't like the recommendations that they propose, we don't have to go with it. But there are other opportunities for redevelopment in the, in South Lyon. I mean, if you look at Pontiac Trail coming from the north, just to the south of the railroad tracks, that whole corridor there could potentially be redeveloped into something else. I'm not saying it's going to be, or that it needs to be, or that it's something that should be targeted, but there is room there to do that.
At a cost of buying out the property and setting up a special district?
Yeah, if you have a, an interested developer that is willing to acquire the property, pay for the property to get it, build there, then that's good. That's good for us, that's good for them.
So if you have a holdout property owner that doesn't want to sell, like what happened in Detroit, and it burns down right next to the Ilitch family, their property, I mean, what, what, what are we gaining with them that Main Street program does not do? I mean, they're doing economic development, too.
Yes.
If, if we have a block or a building that we don't know what to do with, what is the difference in what the Main Street program will provide in terms of assistance to develop that economically versus the MD, the MDEC?
So I guess the difference is a, well, the biggest difference, the first difference is it's another avenue for us to be able to get grant funds. They provide, they have their own separate grant funding available. The Main Street program has their own separate grant funding available. We're able to access technical assistance from the MEDC, which again has people that are very experienced in economic development that will be coming in and assisting us with developing something that hopefully would be good. I've spoken with other downtown managers in Oakland County throughout the state that are also redevelopment-ready certified communities, and they say it's a great program. They're very happy with the results that they've achieved with it. I believe in Farmington. I spoke with their DDA director, and they said the, the bank that's in their downtown, that's being redeveloped currently. But that was because of the RRC program. They helped them develop that package and market it to developers, and now that property is being redeveloped in their community.
Is, is Northville part of this?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, there, I think there are 63 communities that are certified RRC communities right now in the state.
Personally, I would like a little bit more information on this. I mean, I mean, is there a timetable? Do we have to do this tonight, or can we get a little bit more information?
So what, I mean, what would happen tonight is just to, the resolution would approve the baseline report. So it, it would be saying that we're interested in the program. The MEDC would then create this baseline report that shows where the, you know, the ordinance is good, where we need to improve, and then we can go from there. But, I mean, there's...
What ordinance?
Our zoning ordinance.
So we are talking about zoning?
Yeah, but I, they're not going to change the zoning ordinance to something they think we should have. That's not, that's not the role of, of the RRC program or the MEDC.
Then why are they looking at our ordinances, then, if they don't have a criticism of a particular ordinance?
Because there are best practices that are established that have been proven throughout other communities in the state that have worked well for economic development projects in other communities.
So they are going to make recommendations as to maybe changing some ordinances to better reflect?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to go to Councilmember Diggle, and then I'll come to you, Councilmember Kennedy. Really quick, I want to jump in. Did we have a miscommunication, say, within the last calendar year where we thought that we might be eligible for some of these grants? That we were not, because we weren't a member of this, since you've been here?
It's possible, yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just was, for my own knowledge, I thought that that had happened.
It may have happened a while back.
Okay. Councilmember Diggle, go ahead.
I just wanted to be clear, there's no obligation. They're going to look at what we have, they're going to give us some recommendations, we have no obligation to do anything that they suggest. This is just assistance for us and, and help, right?
Correct.
All right, I can't imagine why we wouldn't want to do something like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy.
So about two months ago, Nate, you made the offer to everybody on the council and anybody else that wanted to participate in this training. A couple of the council members took you up on that and have gone through that training. It provides a great deal of information and background as far as what this brings to the table. So a couple of things that it does offer is enhancements to the procedures by which the city operates, to improve transparency, access on the part of a developer coming into town. He knows who to contact, he knows where his application stands, it can easily be tracked and so forth, through the process. So there's improvement opportunities here for the city as far as how they operate administratively as well, that I assume they're also going to provide in their recommendations. Is that accurate?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
So one of the things I, I failed to mention was what you just mentioned, Councilmember Kennedy, was providing that information on our website so that if anybody's looking into South Lyon, they're able to access that 24/7, they know the process from start to finish, what it's going to be like, and they can go from there. They, they know who they need to call, they know what permits they need to get, et cetera, so.
So for instance, you know, and, and the city manager and I have had this discussion about that empty piece of property over on West Lake Street. I mean, they could come in, it'd be on the city website, here's all the vacant property we have in the city right now, here's what it's zoned as, here's who to contact for it, here's the expected asking price, whatever it is. So I mean, they don't have to call, and it's like, well, Nate's not here today, or Judy's out, or whatever. That information becomes readily available to somebody coming in from the outside, and it, it makes it far more accessible to people coming in from the outside to get that information in a timely manner. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So again, these are some of the recommendations, some of the benefits that come from, basically, this organization's going to come in as a consultant, they're going to look at it, say, I'm going to give you a baseline evaluation of where you currently stand, here's the benefits that you can derive as a result of going through this process, and you make that decision as to whether it's worth spending the time and effort to obtain that benefit, basically.
Yes, yes.
In a nutshell, is that pretty much accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Nate, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Kivel, go ahead.
One of the problems that I was having with this is I think that they use an awful lot of amorphous descriptions of what, what the things that we're looking for enhancement. It doesn't actually define anything, it just has a name that sort of leads you to, to envision what, what might be being talked about, and I wish they were a little bit more specific in definitions on what the, the actual end game would be. Hopefully that'll end up being in the next phase when things are a little bit more definitive. One thing that I hadn't really given any consideration to until just now was these would all be wonderful things to end up enhancing things that we, we haven't really done real well as far as the transferal of information to the public at their, their time, you know, being able to do stuff on our website. It's not very friendly to find anything of real consequence, so it'd be really helpful if that were the case. It also brings up the idea that we're going to end up having a, a given to have more man-hours applying to make that information available. So has that been considered for, for hiring somebody to, to be able to import all this information?
Go ahead, Nate. No, you go ahead.
I was just going to say, I don't, we really don't know what this report is going to show us, so we don't know how much detail or what they're going to expect. I mean, they could do this whole, they could do this whole analysis for us, and we can decide that at the end, when they make recommendations and they say, we think you should change your fee schedule, we think you should change perhaps your site plan review, there's some sections in the ordinance that have to deal with downtown parking, there's something else about making it easier for redevelopment to occur on an existing site, which you think is fine, and they may give us a whole bunch of recommendations, and we may say, okay, this is a little bit too much, we don't want to be a part of, if we have to do all these things, we don't want to be a part of the redevelopment-ready, but we could take some recommendations of those things and implement a few of those items, but we don't know how much it might be. It might just be, it might be our staff time, it might be requirements of, you know, adopting or making some changes within the ordinance. So until we get that, we really don't want, know what the cost might be, or their number, a number of man-hours that it would be also.
Okay, at the same time, if, I mean, since we recognize that a lot of that stuff isn't what we've been really banging out of the park with, if they can end up leading us towards being able to put this information together in a comprehensive way where it really will be advantageous for us to have somebody just say, oh, I heard something about South Lyon, and someone spoke about a piece of property that I, that might end up being a good fit for me. If they could go to our website and garner some information that would end up leading them to come to a conclusion whether or not, or at least give them a hint that it's worth investigating, or that it, this is, oh, this isn't what I thought it might end up being. I think both of those would end up being a gift for us, because our involvement would end up being, simply being the ones that put the information on the site, and then the work would actually be the people that are trying to, to understand whether we're a good fit for them. But nonetheless, sooner or later, somebody's going to have to pay for that stuff getting imported into our site. I don't want us to end up seeing, seeing that as a big obstacle for us, because there's no point in having a website if it doesn't actually do something constructive for you. So I think this might end up being a real plus, but I, I just wondered if that had, that had fit into any of the calculus of where, what we're leading up to now.
I mean, we've talked, Nate and I have talked about putting other properties on our website, because right now, if you go to the website, there is a, it's been on there for almost a year now regarding the development of that property on West Lake Street, but it's only that specific property. But we want to have it where there's more properties, and having an individual who's looking at selling property, they create the data, we review it, we provide that information on our website. So we're not the ones that are always typing these things up, putting this, putting this stuff together. We tell them, we could give them a list about what, what the requirements are to put it, that we would have the link on our website, they create it, we review it, make sure everything's okay, and then we put it on there. So that's very little man-hours of ours of that way.
Oh, yeah, that would be terrific, yeah. Right, okay. All right, well, thank you.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
I have another question. In order, they're going to do a baseline, and they're going to present a project, and let's say that they find 10 areas that they feel that we should be focused on, or things that we could do to improve economic vitality in the city. But after we review that, let's say that we only find maybe two or three of them that really fit our community. Does, does, does the rejection of the seven, other seven points that they raise, does that affect our getting re, this redevelopment-ready? Does that mean we know?
It could. I mean, they're going to tell us what they feel that we should do in order to be a redevelopment-ready community, based upon the best practices that are not only used for the MEDC, but some of the things that are used nationwide to try to attract businesses based upon, you know, other examples or other success stories. So they'll say, in order for you in the RRC program, you need to do, you know, most of these things or all these things. Some of these are probably very important, some of them may not be important at all, and then we make that decision. Do we want to make all those changes? Do we want to change the composition of a board? Do we want to change our site plan review time? Do we want to change a fee structure? Do we want to change our parking ordinance? Do we want to do something else regarding, even though a building may be existing and doesn't mean in 10 years from now, something may change, that, that building goes on, or the owner goes on hard times, and that's the opportunity for something else to go there? They want us to be receptive and be prepared to make, you know, other improvements, or to be able to bring development in order to our town, and they want to assist with that process by offering other grants to do that. But we may see, you know, the 18 things that they see on there, or they may see three things, and we may decide, no, that's too much, we don't want to make all those changes, and then we just don't participate in the program.
Well, I, I didn't understand when you said they may ask us to change the composition of, of a board. What did you mean by that?
Well, I just use it as an example. Part of what they do is they look at your composition of board. Let's say some community had three members on a planning commission, and they say, well, we don't think that's a good idea, you should probably have five or seven, or you should try to get people diverse, you should, next time, get somebody else that maybe has a law degree, get somebody else that, that does planning, get somebody else that has experience in, you know, something else, or, you know, retail or whatever. They may make recommendations on that, so we start to implement. So if we have five people applying for a planning commission board, and they say, hey, we think you should probably get some, an other individual, or if they may say, maybe you should look at a history... Or if they may say, maybe you should look at a historic district, that may be something to help preserve your downtown. It could be any number of those things. And I'm just talking off the top of my head, those may not be what they come up with. But our ordinances and how our master plan, and we follow a lot of those best practices already when the creation of our new ordinance. So there may not be a lot of things that they recommend, but right now Nate and I don't know. We've reviewed this, this is going to the state, they're going to tell us. It could be any number of things, it might be nothing, we really don't know.
How long does it take them to render the baseline?
That I don't know how long. I'm not sure on the timeline.
So it could be a year?
I would think it would be less than a year. Within the next six months, hopefully, it would be completed.
I'm sure it has to do with a lot of seeing how many other people or organizations or communities are applying for this also. If they have several of them applying for it right now and they want this stuff done, they probably only have so many field personnel or so many people at the state in order to put it all together. But maybe it could be done quickly, maybe like Nate's saying, it could take six months. But this is just the first step to have them, hey, this is free consultation that we could get that somebody can look at and say, hey, we think in order to best practices, this is what you should do. And like I said, we could say no, but it's always nice to have somebody else from the outside that deals with the economic development all the time be able to assist us in implementing some of these things within our community.
Well, I'm definitely a person who likes a second opinion, there's no doubt about that, so. Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Kibble?
One thing I can say is the sooner we start, the sooner we'll get the results, so.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hanson, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Did we have any further discussion on the matter? All right, Deputy Clerk Piper, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Lisa Dill?
Yes.
Glenn Kibble?
Yes.
Steve Kennedy?
Yes.
Alex Hanson?
Yes.
Maggie Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thanks Nate. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the budget this evening. Does anyone have anything on the budget?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
I'm sorry Patricia, I didn't sneak up there.
I snuck in. Quiet shoes tonight.
It is, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to give council a brief update to a non-update with the ARPA funds. I still have not been able to get any data to provide to you regarding other municipalities and how their use of funds and what has been approved on the national level. At this point, I would like us to start thinking about moving forward. Hopefully, I will get data at some point in the next month or so that I can share. But at least us as a group start talking and thinking and working with the department heads on how we can start utilizing those funds, because it is $1.2 million. We still, of course, have, you know, almost three years to spend it, two years to allocate, but we don't want to, you know, wait too far.
Absolutely. Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you. I've seen, part of what I do at work is review bids that come through all the time. And I've seen a lot from a lot of different city municipalities come through with those ARPA funds. Would it be helpful at all to know what some of these things, projects that people are doing? I know some of them are different, like the city of Detroit, some of the bigger cities are different. But there are smaller ones that are coming out with these projects now.
Yeah, if that is public information that we can provide, that probably would be helpful. Because yes, our pot of money is different, because we're, it's called a non-entitlement unit is what our funds fall under. So it is the lower, small populations.
So what size company would be, I mean, I'm sorry, municipality would be helpful?
I'll have to look, but I think it was 50,000 and under populations.
Okay, yeah, then there are a lot of them that have been starting to do that. So I will, I'll send some over to you as examples, just to see what some people are doing with their funds.
I think that would be helpful, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate that reminder on that. With that, we will open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and remember our two-minute time limit.
Greetings friends. I'm Carl Richards and I live at 390 Lennox Street, just about a block away from here. I wanted to make a couple of comments, not trying to make any big impressions or set the world on fire. But I want you all aware of our problem. Our roof leaked again. After hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on city, on bond grant projects. What they did, I watched it of course, when they did that roof job. And that was immense, having been in the profession once upon a time. I was elated to see it. Okay, but then when it leaked like last week, the big rain, I was very disappointed. And I guess we had a little bit more leakage today. I'm very sorry about that. I hope the rest of the school bond issues doesn't have similar problems with all the money we voted to earmark for improvements. Item number two, I'm very sorry to see one of our old businesses close. It's been a very successful business for at least 20 years here in town, on Lake Street, the bookstore. Wonderful place, an uplifting type of thing for the community, okay? I have bought things there at different times. And I'm glad I got two wonderful books before the whole place closed. Of course, I got a discount. One was a beautiful historical pictographic book. And the other one was authored by a political favorite of mine. And the cabinets, okay, and the display cases. They're still in there, at least they were last Friday. Beautiful little cabinets for display. They'll be gone and I hope we don't get a, I hope we don't get a pizza parlor in the middle of town. But I'm sorry to see that little business go. It was really a wonderful little thing. Okay, thank you very much, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. All right, if we have no one else for public comment tonight, we will close the floor on public comment and move on to the manager's report with City Manager Zellnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I get to close out the Nate Mack Show this evening. I want to first thank Annika Norris from Main Street Oakland County for coming this evening. I've had the opportunity to work with Annika off and on for 20 years, and even when she was in the private sector, now working with Oakland County. And I think she's, will provide excellent guidance for the city of South Lyon as we move forward in not only just this next level, but her assistance in being able to help us out with the Main Street program. At upcoming meetings, we're going to be having Representative Susan Feinberg come in and update as the status of our MERS accounts with the city. The Marjorie Ann Piney Trail sidewalk installation, perhaps some of you have seen the work that was done there, the installation of sidewalks. The county's been back and forth regarding the push buttons and some of those mechanisms. It's really come out great and we've had a couple of really nice comments that were circulated and people are very happy that that intersection was finally improved. City Hall construction update, contractors have been off and on working installing sightings and other improvements. They're getting ready to work also on a flat portion of the roof where is actually leaking within the building right now. That area is what's leaking and that's the area that has not been repaired where the new roof units are actually going to go on. The concerts in the park, still successful, still need individuals perhaps introduced a couple nights. We're excited about the last concert of the year on August 26th, bringing South Lyon's own Anita Cochran to town. And the other acts that we have have just been good turnouts and hopefully we won't have any more rainouts occurring. And the last item was, we're happy to see the, as you know, the ballot proposal for the road improvement has passed. I've been in contact with our bond council as well as our engineers. The bond council waiting for the results to be certified by resolution through the Oakland County canvassers. And they will be working with the engineers and the design regarding expected construction to begin in actually 2023, which is next year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, first of all, all right, on the bond, very exciting. I just wanted to suggest that we try to come up with some kind of a plan or just keep it in mind that whatever we do, we spend money on with this bond, that we are very public about it. We just want to make sure that we're posting, you know, like the engineers are doing, you know, whatever. And, or, you know, we're getting started on this thing, or whatever we're doing. Trying to be as public about it as possible so that people don't, people never believe that we're not taking that money and just throwing it in something else. And you want to make sure that we're really clear about what's being done with that money. I would really appreciate that, I think it's important. And along with that, I know it's something I keep, I've talked about a million times, I'm not going to get into it today. I don't think we need a big discussion about it today because I know you're going to be working on this. Is that we are spending a lot of money, I want to make sure that we are good stewards of that money. And part of that, I think, is looking at who we're spending it on and what we're spending it on. And I know you're going to be looking at the engineers and, you know, if, just if we're going to bid anything out or any of that stuff. So we don't need to get into that today, but I just, I think that's important as well. And then I just wanted to ask you, you gave me an update, but if you could just give a really quick update on the crosswalks we've been talking about and the trail, that would be awesome.
Yeah, the crosswalks, I've been working with DPW because we had to apply for permits for those because those are actually on county roads. So that's part of that is that installation process, and then we're going to be ordering the crosswalks basically through the same company we did last time. So we are moving forward with that.
Do you have any, is there like any kind of guess on a timeline?
I don't have a timeline for that yet. And the issue relating to the trailways project, I was working with our engineers, I have a meeting with them this week because we were discussing and with other contractors regarding whether it's advantageous to actually bid this out still this year or if we could get better prices by bidding it over the winter. But those, that's another thing, because even a five, five or 10% sway in bids could mean a difference of 20 or $40,000 on a 400-plus thousand dollar project to do that work between Volunteer Park and about a mile north.
And we are clear on the area then?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Dill on the issue regarding transparency. And I think I sent you a link to a city that had a website that just really had done a good job of how they were communicating to their public about the use of those funds. I think Councilmember Dill makes a really good point, and it's the same point that I also heard when I was out sort of discussing it and listening to both sides of why someone was voting and not voting for the mill. And this is hard-earned money. I mean, you have a lot of seniors that voted for this and they're on fixed incomes. This is hard-earned money. And so I think we have an incredible obligation to be transparent and to move forward with this. And it's not going to be easy, I'm glad you're here because you have experience dealing with this. So we're going to have a couple of hiccups and, you know, down the road, and there'll be complaints, et cetera. But I'm glad you're manning the ship right now because I think we need somebody that has experience in managing this kind of project. I just wish it had been done 10 years ago, but here we are. So thank you for your efforts on this too.
Councilmember Kennedy?
So Paul, relative to the crosswalk signals, you talked about the one at the rail trail where it crosses Nine Mile. Does that preclude getting the crosswalk signals downtown to the farmer's market?
No, it does not. Those two will be done first. The other one will be a part of the larger project down there, so. Because that will be bid out with that project.
So when we talked last time, that was going to be dependent on the DPW putting in their request for some of the equipment, the replacement equipment that's in this year's budget. Is that still a requirement, or are they going to be bringing forward the proposal to order those crosswalk signals, you know, installed maybe before Pumpkin Fest, who knows, whatever?
Yeah, I don't know the exact date because part of it has to do with the relationship with the county and the timing for their permit review and analysis, and then the equipment getting installed. I mean, last year, I think we were pleasantly surprised how quickly it was done after getting the permit. You know, we got the equipment and we saw them out there the next week trying to do the installation.
Okay, so we're not going to wait though for the one at the rail trail?
No.
Great, okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything for the city manager? All right, great. Thanks for the update. Paul, we'll move on to council comments this evening. We'll start with Councilmember Dill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have a couple of things really quickly. I just wanted to say, we got an email from Chris Enlow, one of the township trustees, just talking about how excited people are about that Marjorie Ann crosswalk. And he just wanted to let people know that he spoke with a, he spoke with a retiree that was in a motorized wheelchair and she actually approached him and said how happy she was that she was going to be able to cross there safely instead of having to go all the way down to Nine Mile. So he just wanted to make sure that we, that we knew that, and he's saying thank you to all of us who supported that joint project. The other thing is, I just, I want to, I'll just read the email that I wrote to, to the city manager and the mayor. I decided to work at the polls this year for the first time. I've never done it before. I'm a little, almost ashamed that I haven't done it before because I think it's really important. And one of the reasons I decided to work at the polls is because I really wanted to see the whole process, understand how it works so that I could explain it to others when they have questions about how you could maybe scam the system or something like that. I will tell you, coming from a mindset of somebody who thought the system was secure, I was shocked at the complexity of the process. And I was so impressed all day with Lisa, Judy, and the rest of the staff, how they handled everything that was thrown at them. They were calm, friendly, helpful, knowledgeable, ensuring that everybody who showed up that was eligible to vote was able to vote. They helped us manage several different scenarios to make sure people, people who showed up were not turned away. A few times, I really thought we were not going to be able to get somebody to vote and they, you know, they figured out the situation and took care of it. Not to mention, after a long day, they were still able to handle the extremely detailed process of closing down the polls. I literally do not how they do this, know how they do this, stay helpful and positive, and work with all the staff there, the poll staff who were like, we don't know what to do. I just think we owe a lot to our staff as well as the clerk offices all over the country for what they do to make our elections happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill, that was a great email. Councilmember Kibble?
Well, pretty much just a reflection of both the theater being just delighted about the prospect of their getting back online. That's very exciting to me. And some of the things that had taken place, the car show and Christmas in July. Just, there was an awful lot of vibrance around town for a while there that I hope that we can keep it up and find some more events to be able to plug in there. It's always nice to see throngs of people downtown, so, and there was every bit of that. So hopefully, we can put our thinking caps on and make up some new events for us, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Hanson?
Well, I just had a couple of things to comment on. The other day, I was picking up my daughters and I was originally going to take them to McCatty Park. Unfortunately, it was well over 95 degrees with probably 110% humidity. Kidding, but instead of that, we decided to go to Spun Sugar and I probably spent too much money. And I definitely wanted to give a shout out to, you know, that business as well as my kids being, well, my four-year-old, my one-year-old is a little bit too young, but my four-year-old was definitely elated with the selection there. So wanted to give that good, good thumbs up. Kid approved, so. The other thing I wanted to mention is a little bit more somber and depressing. I don't know if council is aware, but the Huron River is a 130-mile-long river in southeast Michigan rising out of the Huron Swamp in Springfield Township in northern Oakland County and flowing into Lake Erie as it forms the boundary between present-day Wayne and Monroe Counties. Now, 13 parks, game areas, and recreation areas are associated with the river which passes through the cities of Dexter, Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti, Bel Air, Flat Rock, and Rockwood that were developed along its banks. Now, the Huron River is a typical southeast Michigan stream. Mud banks, slow stream flowing, and a low gradient define the river. Now, here we are again, and only worse. We're being told to avoid contact, avoid contact with the water. The movie Aaron Brock picks seems to come to mind with this. Now, I'm disgusted that we are finding ourselves here yet again. Now, when I lived in Livingston County, I begged the county commission for action. They did practically nothing, so I truly hope that this time, we, and I say we, as a collective body, the state, the county government, city municipalities such as ourselves, hold those responsible and accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to highlight some of the events for this upcoming week. On Friday, we will have the Concert in the Park at the Historical Village, and it will feature the Randy Brock Group, and they will be entertaining the crowd with a wide variety of classic rock music. On Saturday, as always, we will have our farmer's bar at downtown from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. This week, they will have a mini food truck rally featuring the Grand Travers Pie Company, Reno's Hot Dog Stand and Catering, Snowy Owl's Shaved Ice Company, and the Scratch Sweet Shop. Later that same day, St. Joe's Catholic Church will be holding a music night in their parking lot, sponsored by the Knights of Columbus, from 6:30 until 9:30 at night. The event will feature the Del Ray's and the Lenny Earls, providing an evening of music from the 50s and 60s, and they will also have burgers and beverages available. And finally, I want to again remind everyone that furry friends rescue will be in the parking lot of Pet Supplies Plus this Saturday and Sunday, from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., collecting returnable bottles and cans to help fund their efforts. So remember to drop by and drop off your bags of returnables to help this organization as they work to find permanent loving homes for pets. Truly a great initiative on their part. So a lot of things going on, make plans now to attend these great events this weekend in South Lyon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank Councilmember Hanson for his comments regarding chromium 6. I had an opportunity to speak with the head of the Water Department, Doug Varney, and receive some additional information regarding questions that I had regarding this particular leaching into the ground. Once is disgusting, and twice, I think it's time for criminal sanctions myself, but that's for those in the know, I guess, to handle it. But there's no excuse for it. I am very, very particular about water quality, and will continue to move forward on issues that protect our water. So there's that. So thank you very much, Mr. Hanson. Next, I would like to also say that I always taken interest in our elections, and I will say again, is that there may be other places in the country, other places in the state of Michigan that have had issues with election integrity. You won't find those issues here in the city of South Lyon. They are very tightly run, very well organized. It is a complete professional staff that works here, making sure that every person who comes to vote, your vote counts. So I, too, would like to thank the staff for their incredible dedication, and what is unfortunate is that you have residents in the city who are, in my view, abusive to some of these individuals, because things just didn't go their way. So I'm going to sort of telegraph to those people that had a problem on the primary. It's kind of a little secret, but I think there's going to be another election on November 2nd. In fact, I think there's going to be an election in November of 2023, and one in November of 2024. So you've got plenty of time to get over to City Hall and straighten things out, so that you do not cause yourself to be the embarrassment that you were in terms of how you behaved. There's no excuse for it at all, particularly when you've been in the city for at least six months. And then I would like to thank an individual, and I was sort of looking on my, here on the social app that I'm on, and I would like to thank Diane Dennis. Diane, wherever you are tonight, you made a wonderful post, and you said, the ladies and gentlemen at District 3, I think she meant Precinct 3, were very nice and knowledgeable. So I want to thank Diane Dennis for that wonderful vote of approval in terms of how our staff conducted the election. Next, the Historical Society is placing throughout town in our businesses donation boxes for you to drop a donation in for the barn-raising fundraiser. The society is working so hard on raising money for this project, so hopefully they will raise enough money that this project will become a reality for our wonderful Historical Village. So please, visit our businesses, stop off at a donation box, and put something in there for the hard-working individuals over at the Historical Society. And last, I'd like to thank the following sponsors of the Lake Street Cruisin', South Lyon Psycho Coral Sash Venue, South Lyon, Nita Alexa Studio, and Fortune Tool and Machine. See everyone on August 24th at 6:30, and I will be joined by Cruisin' DJ Paul Peters. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. I just want to thank the voters. What an emotional roller coaster Tuesday was. You know, I was in touch with you, Councilmember Kurtzwell, and, and several other people here in the community. You know, what a huge, huge step for our community to be able to pass the roads plan for a community that experienced so much growth in the 90s, and I'm not, this is, let me just take a quick break. This is not a shot at anybody that was up here beforehand either, but I felt it was essential, the team up here, and the team with the city, and the team with the engineering firm, and all of those involved in getting the information out to the people who needed it. Kudos to you. This was, this is not just us up here, this, this was a team effort all the way around. And as the votes came in, it was really good to see that the community understood the importance of us not missing out on this opportunity to get something going. You know, it's tough to stand out there at the polls and tell people there is a Plan B, and there really wasn't. I mean, besides throwing the Band-Aids on the, on the roads like we have been for the better part of the last two decades. So I appreciate Councilmember Dill's messaging, along with Councilmember Kurtzwell's messaging, and us keeping the transparency out for the folks, I think that's important. But really, at the end of the day, you know, this 10 years of going through this project is hopefully going to put us in a position to be able to build on that 10 years down the road. So thank you to all of you, because that was, as far as I'm concerned, in my time being here and being fortunate enough to represent this community, Tuesday was the biggest victory in my time. So, thank you. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Move to adjourn.
Have a great night, all.